Of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Okay, roll call, Larry is out and it is an excused absence. Can I get an approval of the agenda?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on to our communications. Do we have anybody signed up? Did you sign up to talk? Yeah.
Oh yeah.
Okay. All right, we'll move on. Standing committee reports. Has anybody had anything?
No, but if I could just real quick.
Only if you turn your microphone on.
All right. So about four years ago, we decided we were going to try to do something for one of our former teachers who was also a Holocaust survivor. We were told the story by some staff member and we can't remember who told us and we all agreed at that time that we should do something, dedicate something or do something for this wonderful author. And she wrote this book when she was teaching and she wrote it in such a fashion so that her students could easily read it. Her name was Noemi Bond and I recommend that you all read the book, Sharing is Healing. And anyway, I, I, she's 95 now, you know, I figured if we don't do something pretty quick, we may never get the opportunity to. So I went ahead and ordered this plaque, I talked to a few of the board members and they recalled the incident that we had approved it. And it simply says, "Achievement Award Presented to Noemi Bond. Your survivor spirit as author and teacher inspires us all. Thank you. Melville School District, 2018." And there's a card that goes with it, so if I could pass it around and get it signed. And I'll make sure to get it mailed to her.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Now I just need to figure out how I'm going to get reimbursed.
We can get that figured out, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Nobody had anything else? Okay. All right, uh, can I get a motion to approve action items by consent by A, B, C, D, and E?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion. Motion, man, you can tell Summer has hit.
Not me, so it's not me.
All right, um.
They all came, I guess. Curriculum.
Are they done already? Oh, there we go.
I guess there's no question.
Thanks for coming.
Sorry.
Um, all right, moving on to consider facilities rental rates.
So our policy calls for the board to annually set those rates. We redid them last year, created kind of a new rental structure, we're tweaking that slightly this time with the addition of district junior athletic teams into the group A, but combining that with also an increase on the deposit for turf.
Okay. All right, any questions?
Why the, what does the increase on the turf deposit do for us? Have we had issues in the past?
We have with some groups damaging the turf. And also since we were essentially lowering the rental rates, we wanted some skin, a little bit upfront. And if the, there's no damage throughout the season, they get their money back.
My only concern, and I'll just lay this out there for discussion, is that at our last listening session, we heard from representatives of one of the junior teams that the current rates were unaffordable to them and that they believe less children would be signing up for this and that that would eventually become the end of that program, that they wouldn't have the kids because they couldn't afford it. So when we're looking at this, that's the thing that kind of sticks out in my head is that if, if that happened where we passed something that was unaffordable to essentially half of the district, we could end up with a situation where we have these sports, these feeder teams are the feeder group on one side and not the other. I think as a district, we do a really good job of trying to figure out that line of equity, where we're trying to do the best for all of our students across our entire district. I have concerns with actually a number of changes in this, including going to 100%, that that could put one or both of them into the same boat. And part of it is just not knowing for sure because I haven't talked with them directly, but it was a bit of a surprise after we raised them and then a year later found out that there were, there were all of these issues with that change. So I guess I'm just going to throw that out there, that that's my concern, that we not do something that essentially forces one of these or both of them to end.
I agree, I have a concern with the, with that as well. Exactly what you said, with the, especially with the 100% cap on the, on the requirement for them to be district.
I have more of a concern of the 100% over the deposit. When you figure the amount of money that we just put into the new turf fields here last year, the new turf fields that are going in at Oakville High School and having a situation as soon as the brand new turf fields were in over here of the fields getting damaged right away, especially if it's a refundable fee. So that part doesn't concern me as much as the 100% participation because we do have some kids that are not in our schools playing on these teams. So that would be my biggest concern and I know there needs to be a balance of what we're trying to do and also protecting the assets and the facilities that we have here too. So my concern is that 100%, I would probably be more inclined to 85% on that level, but I don't know how anybody else feels on that.
Yeah, I agree. My experience with the feeder programs, because my kids were in them, is that they actually use them to try to get, I mean, they, in the hopes that some kids will come to our high schools.
Sure.
Because of the football program or the basketball program or the wrestling program or whatever. So making it 100% then excludes any kids and I don't think you're going to have a lot of that, um, you know, and you will have the problem of a lot of them, my husband coached one of the teams where a lot of them ended up at Vianney, even though they were in our middle schools, you know, so, but they were still our kids.
And I think you end up with the same thing.
Both ways.
I know a family of six that went through the Catholic school up to eighth grade and then all six kids came into our high schools.
Right.
So I think there's probably a pretty good balance.
Right. And I, yeah, and I agree with you that we need to protect our turf and if it's only a deposit, then you can charge the players a deposit also and give the players their money back if they.
Right.
Yeah, there was some confusion, I believe, from our listening session that actually was miscommunicated by the feeder team spokespersons that they didn't completely understand the new schedule and it wasn't all, so I mean, I think once we make a decision, we need to make sure it's actually implemented because I researched it thoroughly and, you know, some of the new schedules weren't even really being charged in reality, or there was just a miscommunication on how they were going to charge them. So it wasn't as, it was kind of scary if you broke it all down and went, oh wait, we have to, do we have to pay for parking and restrooms and, but once you rented the turf, you didn't have to obviously pay for parking and, but it looked like, from looking at it, there were all these à la carte items that you might also have to pay for, but that was misinform people technically in that session. So that, that fear is sort of gone.
Right.
Does anyone know what the normal cost is going to be if they're in the B category for a year of, say, football?
So if you go back a few years, there weren't the ABC categories, it was just kind of a flat rate. And the annual bill, depending on how many times they played and for how long of a time period they used the field. So was it a three hour or was it a four hour? Those annual bills would range between, you know, $3,500 to $6,000, mostly closer to the five to six. Then the, going back a few years, then they're essentially were unilaterally cut in half. That, that was not any board action, that was just done in some way, shape, or fashion. So most of their bills went to about half, but not quite. So the group Bs would be pretty much at what they had paid historically.
The half part or the, that five to six?
That five to six.
That five to six would be a group B?
Yeah. And the challenge with some of these groups is they owe us from years past, significant sums.
Yeah, that's another, another problem. So the $1,000 for a deposit and avoiding, some of that's got to be custodial too, right? Or is that not included in that number you said, five to six?
That was, yeah, that was everything.
Okay.
Kind of all in.
So custodial is still going to be there, but that thousand is probably less than what they're going to save by going from B to A. Is that a true statement?
Well, going from B to A, their rental rate goes down $110, well, it goes down $70 an hour. So there's a significant drop off. So depending on what day of the week, so for turf, if it's a non-school day, there's the custodial fee that's added to the cost of turning on the lights.
Right.
All right, so we've got somebody who comes out, opens things up, you know, the use of lights or the charge around the lights, and then on a weekday, it's just a light charge because we've already got custodians here.
Okay. So if my math isn't too far off, four hours, eight games, 2240 for turf charges versus a $1,000 deposit at the beginning of the year that would be refundable?
It's definitely, I mean, the way we structured it is definitely less expensive overall.
The, can we talk about the insurance for a sec? The $2 million general liability per occurrence. I read the answer on that and I wasn't positive from that. If that's required for everybody who rents the field?
That's part of the rental agreement for all entities.
For everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a reason to have it separate on the junior athletic team's application or should that be added to everybody's application?
So some groups have insurance already, so it's not an issue. For those that don't have issue, they can buy event insurance.
Okay.
So most of our groups have it, but for these teams in particular, we want them to have their own insurance because that's a heck of a lot cheaper than paying event insurance for every game or practice. Event, the event, event insurance used to be really, really cheap and it is not anymore. I mean, you can get an insurance policy cheaper than you can pay for two or three of the events insurance. It's just, it's really a cheaper way to go and most of our entities have their insurance.
Do you know about what that goes for on an annual?
I think a lot of the PTOs get it for less than $200 a year.
Okay. I would imagine for football, it's got to be higher.
When I was, back in my PTO days, it would, we would, we had to, no matter what we were doing, we had to carry event insurance, um, you know, any special events, obviously. And it was $60 or $70, I believe, at the time.
Purry bet, purry bet.
Okay.
To, you know, to have them list us as an insured.
So quite a bit more.
They jacked it up a couple of years ago.
Right, that's, I mean, that was, my kids are out of college and that was grade school days, so.
So like for Boy Scouts, our Boy Scout and Girl Scout troops, that insurance is through Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, so we get their form every year and we're good to go.
Does anybody know if the junior teams already have this?
Most of them do, I believe.
I mean, the two that were, that.
If they're a 501(c)(3), theoretically, they're required to have it and if they don't, they're crazy. I mean, because it opens them up to so much liability.
Right.
So I mean, it's good practice for them to have it regardless, if we require it or not.
Okay. That makes sense.
I have a, this may be a silly question, but I was thinking, you know, like when you get a rental car, is it going to be inspected prior to and after the gate to make, you know, just to observe the turf and see how it is?
We've got, we've got people out there all the time. We have, we have a custodian who's out there every morning checking out the track and the field.
But there might not necessarily be one there after they're done. Is that true?
With our, with the weekend, they're paying for that custodian to kind of be there and they'll lock it up and shut.
Okay, so they could check it out.
And then for the weekdays, so we have a custodian in the morning opens a gate and checks the field. And then at evening, we have one that locks the gate.
I see. And that's, so that's part of their, like, job is to check that field before and after an event?
Yeah, I mean, every, I mean, I see the, I see them out there because I am here swimming in the morning, so I watch them open up the gate and go around the field.
Okay.
Plus, we have, I mean, we have a lot of people who just jump the fence and use it, so part of it too is monitoring the trash can buildup and kind of all of that too.
Okay.
All right, so if we break the changes down, turf, $1,000 refundable deposit is less than what will be saved by going from B to A, at least 50% less, possibly more, and it's refundable. $2 million for general liability insurance is cheaper than doing per event and it's required by everybody already. So in reality, it's not a change other than the save, we want you to have it and it's cheaper to do it that way. And the participant roster for 100% of participants being students that attend a Melville School District school was the last one, I believe. I think those were the three changes, right?
Yeah.
I'm still not sold on the 100%.
I agree.
So I've got it pulled up so Tori can look at what I'm writing. And changing to 100% of students must be residents and then just to have to make it a significant enough difference between B and A, are we going 90% if you're looking at kids who attend our schools rather than 85? The 75 to 85 is just not a big jump.
B is 75, right?
Correct.
I guess people that know, I apologize if we had, we had kids that just aren't into sports, so I'm going to defer to the people that kind of know how those teams are made up, would something be too much to overcome or not? I don't know what that level should be.
I mean, each year it could vary, so I, you know, I mean, I think it's a fair, I think 90% would probably cover the difference and I think that's a fair, subtle bar if the, because they can always be a B group. And I mean, there's also the, there's other issues that they may not want to become group A for various reasons.
Right.
So.
We've got some that don't want to be in these categories because they don't want to share their financials.
Sure.
It's staggering, man.
I would be comfortable at the 90% as well in leaving the other two alone. I just don't want to be at 100% for that one.
Right, so they can make.
Would you say Sam used to would like to be the 100% for?
I said I would not, I don't want to be at 100%. I would, I think 90% would be fair and leaving the insurance and the $1,000 turf charge.
In place.
Absolutely, yeah.
There also are requirements, as Chris said, for having the books open. Personally, I think that's a good thing. I think people want to know that the money they're giving to these organizations are going to the right things.
Right, I agree, I agree.
Yeah, we have a number of parents come to us complaining about some of these parent groups and I, you need to talk to them.
Right.
So this is just a way to kind of open that up. So I rewrote that box as participant roster on the form provided. 100% of participants must be residents of the district, 90% of participants must be students that attend a Melville School District school.
I think that's fair.
Do we need to make the motion with that change?
I tell you, I think what I'd like to do is just take that and give you a clean copy and just put that under consent next time.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Sure, I think so.
That way, it's a lot more clear.
Right.
And we've got something clean that's in the record.
Okay, I think that would be good. Thank you. Anybody else have any other questions? All right, we'll move on to policy revisions.
So there's just the one on short-term leaves and that was really all around the holiday issue.
Right. Okay. Anybody have any questions regarding this policy?
No.
No? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the policy?
What's the name of that again? GDBC?
DA.
GDBC?
GCBDA.
GCBDA.
Just take off KKA.
Move to approve policy GCBDA as presented.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on to our budget amendment.
Wait a minute, there was another policy mentioned in that.
We, it was removed, it was sent back to policy.
Hi, Marshall.
Black.
Hello.
All right.
All right, budget amendment here to update things because they're constantly changing on the revenues, not significant net change, a net decrease of $78,000. There's a number of buckets that have changed, but mainly it's the sales tax that we're reducing based on what we're actually going to get from this state. So you work your way down to the bottom and it's a net change of just a decrease of $78,000. And then on the expense side, a lot of buckets reclassing, you know, smaller amounts for the most part, but when you net that together, it nets out to zero, so we're still at the same point that we were on expenses. So unless there's questions, our net budget amendment is really a decrease of $78,000 on revenue.
Any questions?
And just as a reminder, we're, we're still up about a million dollars over the adopted budget last June, so it's been favorable on the operating side.
Okay. All right. Anybody have any questions? No? Okay.
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, go ahead, again.
All right, now I'm doing the budget. Okay, so we've covered most of the, we've covered a lot of this over this, this whole spring and from the last time I met, there's just been a few changes, some tweaking of revenue, which once again is taking down the sales tax and then on the expense side, make a few adjustments there. So the net change is taking the, the net budget down about $300,000. It's about a four tenths of a percent on the cash reserve. So in the end, it's, it's still a minor change. We had like $500 and some thousand dollars net gain on the operating fund and now it's down to 315, so in the scheme of $120 million, it's, it's pretty minor. What I've done is I've got a handout that you guys should all have and it's got a copy of the letter to the board that as it stands now, that's the way it would read on June 28th from the present for approval. And then there's budget message, which is the first eight pages of the handout. And then there's a few selected excerpts of schedules from the big thick document that got posted to E-Board. So if you're on E-Board, there'd be dozens and dozens and dozens of pages for the whole package. So what I've done is just give you a handout of the highlights. And all I want to cover today is really just the executive summary, which is on page eight of the handout. And then if you're wanting to, there's certain schedules behind that that would drive home the points on the executive summary. So the main thing on point number one is the fact that, once again, where we stand right now is our operating gain would be $315,000 because of the cash reserve, 26.9%. And then on the second point, if you look, that really pertains on your packet to page 10 and page 11. It's talking about revenue increases versus trends and expense increases versus trends. On this budget, the revenue increases nine tenths of a percent. Our historical trend for the last eight years is about 1.3% per year. So we're a little under the trend, but the reason we're under, one reason is it's a non-reassessment here, so you're not going to get as much taxes. On the expense side, we're increasing 3.2%. Our trend is 2.2%. So it's higher than the trend, but part of that is catching up on expenses that, you know, back before the Prop R days, we've gotten behind. And one of those points is driven home by point number three on the executive summary. In the executive summary, point number three talks about what we've done with salaries and benefits. In that budget, it increases 3.2%. And of that, the salaries piece of that increases 2.2 million and we've been able to, of that 2.2 million, about 900,000 or 41% of that number is salary restructuring. So when you look at what we've done with the teachers to add $500 to the base and add $100 to tier three, that's a $528,000 bump to our salaries. On the classified side, it's $313,000 that we added. So we're, we're making progress. That's, that's, you know, very important and it's nice progress that we've made on the salary side. On page seven of the executive summary, so just the page before this executive summary that you're looking at, I've got under the CFO comments, the first point that I talk about talks about this whole salary issue and how we've made notable progress in fiscal year 18, this current year, and then the budget for next year. It also talks about it might be beneficial for us to target what we think the ultimate benchmark, what are we striving for, where are we trying to get, where do we want to stand on teacher salaries, where do we want to stand on classified salaries? If we identify the benchmark, then we can identify how many dollars it takes to get there and then we can figure out and more thorough plan about it to get there. So that's just a thought, it might be beneficial. Going back to point number four on the executive summary is just to note real quick on health insurance, that we, we do have some healthy fund balances. That health insurance expense is $8.2 million. Because we have healthy fund balances, we're yet again not going to have a rate increase. We haven't had one since 2015. We haven't had one since twenty fifteen. It's important to always keep in mind, this is a temporary window of opportunity. If we had a typical ten percent increase in health insurance rates, ten percent of eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars, or eight million, two hundred thousand, is an eight hundred and twenty thousand dollar hit to the budget. It's interesting that saving that eight hundred and twenty thousand, we spent nine hundred thousand dollars on pay restructure. So it's, it's a nice offset. Point number five talks about capital funding. If you go to page twelve, the capital plan, that's really just a reiteration of what we've talked about in the past. You know, it just runs through the three extra things that we're funding to the capital fund. We're, we're ultimately adding two point seven five million dollars additional funding to our capital fund. And it comes from that one point seven five million dollar transfer that we've talked about and the two cent optional tax levy and the Prop A. So it's just, that's important just to continue to keep that fresh in your mind and know how that's working. Because that, that'll be important later on as we get deeper into how do we really fund capital projects. That's not the ideal way that you really want to do for the long term. You don't really want to rob from your general fund in that manner. Then we get to point six. If you go to page thirteen and, and look at the bottom of that page, as well as point six here on the executive summary, they go hand in hand. And all it's reminding is, once again, our cop fund, which is a long debt. You know, right now we're funding out with fifty-one cents after fiscal year twenty-one. We only have one cop left. We've talked about this before, just a quick reminder, because this will be, you know, part of a bigger conversation, you know, as we go forward. Once you get to, after fiscal year twenty-one, you only need about one point three cents each year through fiscal year twenty-nine to pay off that, that final cop. So then the discussions will be, what do we want to do? We had Prop P passed in two thousand for forty-nine cents. What do we want to do? How do we, how do we want to effectively use that money? And there's a lot of different ways and options that we can look at, but that'll be much discussion in the future, what we want to do. And then point number seven is looking at, in your packet, page fourteen, the forecast. And in general, when you look at the, the numbers and the cash reserve percentages, the district finances appear stable. And we appear like, you know, we're, we're in decent shape. And the only thing that I want to say is, you just have to be careful, because many variables can change this. You've really got to take caution when you review the forecast, because significant fluctuations can occur just one year down the road and that can throw the whole five years way, way off. So it's really important not to look at those as absolute numbers. You need to look at those as just very general trends for strategic planning. You can tell by looking at that, are we headed to fall off the cliff? Are we headed for decent times? You can make general assumptions, but I guarantee you those numbers will change somewhat significantly over time. So it just gives you a good general ballpark, but don't, you know, I wouldn't go betting on, you know, the numbers for five years from now. The final comment is, if you look at page sixteen on the finance dashboard, that's something that's in your financial statements every single month. And basically, if you look, just really, I just want to talk about two sections on that tonight. And this is just, once again, a reminder of, you know, where, where we've been at, where we're at now. One is the, the tax rate. What this dashboard does, it looks, there's twenty-two schools in St. Louis County. I, for the most part, try to benchmark against the twelve largest schools. So when you do that on the tax rate, we're the eleventh lowest tax rate out of those twelve schools. But what you don't see on that sheet is of all twenty-two, we're the twentieth lowest. Clayton and Ladue are the ones that are below us. So, you know, and I've said this before, but I just, I believe in reiteration. Prop R was great. We really, really appreciate it, but we are still the twentieth lowest tax rate. And I'm not, I'm not suggesting anything, I just, this is information. And then the other thing is on the spend per student, there's, there's capital spend per student, but there's also just, just basic expenditures per student. If you look at the expenditure per student, we're dead last of the twelve largest districts. We're dead last in the total amount spent per student. And off the sheet, when you look at all twenty-two districts, we're twenty-first out of twenty-second. So I just think this district is doing, you know, we're, we're showing that we're stewards of the money. And I, I guess that's my point. We're, we're not wasting money. And I just think it's important to keep that in mind periodically. So those are the key comments that I've got. Like I said, we've got a big thick E-Board's document there if you really get bored at night. Any questions?
Can I just add something to that? What you said about what we spend per student is right on. We are at essentially second lowest in all of St. Louis City and County. And yet, when you look at us academically, using normal measures, we're still in the top half. So what you're saying is exactly right. This district, the people in this district do amazing things with the resources that we have. So that's an excellent point and keep shouting that, that's a good thing.
All right, any other questions? Comments? Thank you, Marshall.
Thank you, Marshall.
All right, moving on to the strategic plan.
No.
No, not yet.
The budget amendment, we needed one. We needed that.
Okay. Okay. Let's go back. Okay, let's go back to.
Oh, for the budget amendment.
For the amendment.
Yep. Seven C.
Yeah.
And can we get a motion to approve the budget amendment?
Motion to approve the budget amendment as presented.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Thank you, Sue. All right, strategic plan.
So we use this grid that you have there in E-Board to kind of help us plan out. You've got it out through twenty twenty-seven, mostly because of the curriculum and textbook adoption schedule, because that's kind of set and it's cyclical. But our curriculum team has been doing a little bit of tweaking on that. One of the things that we've found is that some of our larger curriculums, if you will, it's a stretch to get that done in a year. So taking that over a two-year period in some cases. So that's really the, kind of the big change from the last time you've seen this, is just kind of elongating that out a little bit in terms of some of those taking two years. On the staff development piece, we also are expanding the math innovator program for this upcoming year. We'll have a problem-based learning academy that'll start up. And our leadership development program actually will kick off the second week of July. So we've got like thirty-four, thirty-six? Thirty-five, right in the middle. People from all departments that will be participating in that. So otherwise, you know, the, the thing that was kind of on there that were, will not happen for next year is the Academy two fifty-five concept. But everything else on there is stuff that we've seen before. This kind of governs our work, helps us kind of define what we want to do in the budget, plays around with what the curriculum budget will kind of look like. And helps us plan a little bit out there, a little bit further. So in the finance piece, you can see that notion that we've been talking about since late last June. The notion of a levy transfer possibly, you know, when we estimated that a year ago, we were estimating it forty-seven cents. Now it looks like that may could go to forty-nine, but we, we're just keeping the more conservative number in there. So later this fall, we'll probably have a conversation around what are some options in there so we can kind of begin to, begin to plan a little bit better.
All right.
Okay.
I'm going to start on this one.
That's your prerogative.
Thank you. Academy two fifty-five, so it won't be opening this year. We have our fifth graders going in place at Mosaic, so obviously I get a little bit more concerned about what we are going to do at middle school to be ready for the kids, not only coming from Mosaic. I don't want to make it sound like it's exclusive to Mosaic students, because many of our teachers are doing a lot of this type of teaching in our schools throughout the district as well. And kids are going to be, I think, a little bit more drawn to it. So what is our plan for the following year when these kids are going to be in sixth grade?
So right now, one of the challenges around Academy two fifty-five was not opening it, but sustaining it. And the sustaining piece was all around this bubble of kids that are about to hit the middle school.
Okay.
And kind of not having space, you know, to kind of cordon off a little bit. So Bernard has had conversations around what they could do internally a little bit. Next year will be the third year of the, our big engagement work with middle schools. So the first year of this group of students who will have attended Mosaic for two years, that will be the middle school's fourth year in that piece. The other thing that we talked about, Scott Clark and I have talked about, is the importance of getting middle school faculty into Mosaic this fall, so that they can see what these kids are doing.
Okay.
So that they can, so it's not this nebulous concept, but they actually can see it in concrete. Those are the, kind of the two pieces that we've really been focusing on the last month or so, about what we can do kind of in that regard. But that's probably not all that's going to happen, but those are, those two pieces are probably the most concrete at this point.
Okay.
And, you know, middle schools are already one to one, so we've got that, that piece is already in place.
Right.
There, there's some other stuff that's kind of already been done, so.
Okay. Do we know when we will have some further updates as far as where those kids will fall when they get to middle school after this following year? So will we have, like in six months, is there an update? I guess if they're going to go in, in the fall, maybe around Christmas, is there a timeframe that we can set up just to kind of get some information and feedback from the teachers, how that's going? And if anything else will be able to be implemented at the time? And then is there anything that we need to do on our end for that?
I don't, I don't think so from the board standpoint at, at this point. October probably will be given a fairly exhaustive staffing and enrollment report.
Okay.
So that will include the current year, but we'll also have some projections in there. One of the things that'll be different for that kind of cohort of kids is they came from all over the district and now they're going to get split out kind of across the district.
Right.
The balance kind of going to each school, each middle school should be fairly close at, you know, around ten to twelve.
Okay.
Is about what we should see exactly, but because Wollin and Beasley get split in the two middle school, it may be off a little bit.
Okay.
But we try to keep the enrollment at Mosaic proportional among the elementary schools.
Right.
You know, the easy example is that Beerbomb is thirteen percent of the enrollment and thirteen percent of the kid, kids come from Beerbomb.
Okay. Okay. Question?
I was just going to follow up on one that was in the written part and I, I understand the answer in there about the baseball fields, but I guess I just wanted to ask if, I'm not exactly sure the right way that somebody would do this, but if somebody could make a formal assessment of those baseball fields and just kind of figure out what needs to be done, what could be done that might save money in the long term? And then figure out where it might fit in? And there's probably a couple of different scenarios, given what might happen here in a few years, understanding what you said about if we jam it in, we disrupt things. And I'm not advocating that.
The, the challenge with any athletic field is topography. That, that just say plays such a role in kind of what, what you have the ability to do? And then what adjustments or tweaks that you can make to that. I had a field one time. We were redoing it, but there was a big field house. We had to work around that. So that kind of governed how everything got laid out. And right field would go out and then it went up towards the fence at the end. So because of that, the outfield was always just a mess. So we ended up putting a storm drain system in there. It helped a little bit, didn't help a whole lot. You know, if you think about, spring sports are a challenge anyway because of the weather. So they're almost always, it, it seems like they get canceled a lot or, you know, games get postponed or dates get moved. So it's kind of, we spent all that money to put the drains in and I don't know that that helped us play any sooner than we probably would have already, you know? But in that particular instance, we had the topography just off of that, so we had a downhill that we could go to. So we could drain it to somewhere. Other place I was, I mean, it was tabletop. There, there was nowhere for the water to go. It just had to seep in. So if, you know, what, what I see in some, kind of across the baseball, softball complex happening is a number of people moving to grass infield. And there's only, I mean, a handful that I know of that have started to move to turf.
Actually, we are going to be the last school that does not have a turf baseball field in the county, as usual. We're last to get on the train of everything and I know finances play a lot of that. But the only other school is getting theirs in this year, I think. So that will leave us with the only school district in the county that does not have turf fields now.
Can someone give me an idea of how much money we're talking about to replace these fields?
Sure, a lot.
Well, I mean, just, I know a lot, but millions?
Yeah, honestly, where I started with this was not necessarily getting into that, but more just asking that somebody look into it and kind of look at the options and maybe come back and kind of tell us.
I think they're well beyond just looking at them anymore. They've been, they've been neglected for so long. I, I mean, and much like many other things in the district, which I understand. But it's really disheartening when you're out at those fields and you're standing there and a group walks by from another school and you hear them go, this place is a show. Talking about our facilities. It's a little embarrassing, even if some of the work was done cosmetically could make, you know, it just, for example, looking at Oakville. Their dugouts, new rooftops on the dugouts, just simple things like that, new paint. I think they used some money to build the fence up.
Yeah, but like Dr. Gaines says, are you going, are we going to do this stuff and then it turns out we have to, have to redo everything anyway?
I'd prefer to just do it right the first time around. But I understand that that's expensive as well. But I think there are things that we could do in the interim that outside of just the fields. But I mean, the other thing is too, is for Oakville High School, we've only got one field over there. So girls softball gets a bright yellow or bright orange fence put up in the outfield. I know band practices on it. But at what point does girls softball deserve to have their own field where we're not putting up a bright orange fence in the outfield of our baseball fields? I mean, baseball fields are not softball fields. They are different.
Well, if we have to go by who deserves it, of course, they all deserve it, but, you know, the thing is, how can we work it into what we've got or what we don't have or what we don't want to get rid of or what we don't want to spend? Or what can we spend? You know, are we at a point where now would be the time to do it?
It would, I would like to, I would be happy if I at least saw it in within our five to seven-year plan where it was at least going to be addressed, much like, you know, the new turf here.
So we need some business. We need to know how much money we're talking about, like Kevin said.
Yeah, probably just some thoughts on scope first as far as what options are there or about how much are there, what's the benefits of them.
So that, you know, we've done the two turf replacements. That's a lot easier than putting in turf. Because to put in turf, you've got a lot of site work and you've got to put down that base. You know, even at the redo at Oakville, there was some redo of the base, you know, because you can't just lay the turf down on the mucker.
Right.
And put a subfloor down.
Well, and what would be the option too of looking at just doing turf infields and keeping a grass outfield? I mean, those are things that are done as well that are not, that if, if our cost is what our problem is and our concern is, you know, as long as you have the good drainage out there, which we don't, we don't.
Our, I mean, our fundamental problem is that since 2001, we're the only district in St. Louis County who has not made a significant investment in their facilities.
I know.
I mean, that's, that's the underlying piece.
Right.
Yeah, our people do a lot with what we have, but we just don't have enough to do some of these things that should really be done.
When I show some of this data to our parent groups, one of my messages, we are not the norm. We are the anomaly.
Yeah. And we understand that and it's just one of those that, you know, my son has played over there for four years now and we're done. So I have no really stake in the game anymore of seeing it outside of it's something that, you know, I mean, we were raising money for a $9,000 tarp and it's just, it's things like that that just kind of wear on you after a while as a parent that we're being fundraised to death and now we're paying for a tarp and that's a facility need, not a parent need. So it's just things like that. I would like to see if we couldn't get somebody to take a look at those and give us our options of what they could do. I think at the very least, we would know and we would know where, when, and if it can fit into the facilities plan. All right, I'm off my soapbox of, see, you had to bring up the ball fields, didn't you? Sorry.
I'll just mention also, there are some wish list things, I believe, of the baseball fields in lieu of turf that, I mean, we could look at, but, I mean, the question is, is this putting a Band-Aid on it or is it?
Right. Well, exactly. And our first priority is to educate our students and we know that, we all know that. But at some point, are, you know, are we going to just let it, you know, decay into a place where it's unusable? Because if that's the case, then just do it now and be, you know, be done with it. Don't try to make a silk purse out of a pig's ear and keep pouring money in it.
And people care about facilities as well as much as they do their academics. They don't want their kids going into, I mean, what's the point of getting a great education if I have to worry about ceiling tiles falling in on my kid while they're sitting there? So academics, yes, is our priority and facilities has to be right there with it because if our facilities aren't up to par.
And of course, we all know that. I guess what we need, what we need to know is money, amounts, and if not now, when.
You on that for us, Chris?
You know, I, it's, you know, you get estimates on stuff, but, you know, Kevin said it at the beginning too, it's, you know, what are the priorities and what needs to be done first, right? So do you fix an HVAC system or do you fix a ball field?
Well, and I don't think anybody's asking to change anything. I think it's just, what are the costs and at what point and where can we get it added into the facility plan?
It might be helpful just to identify it as well, just knowing what we have coming up in the next few years. To be another one of those things that has gone down in our district that if we want to be a destination district, which I think we're on the road to getting there, I think we've been making some great strides these last couple of years, but boy, there's more to go and making sure people truly understand the state of our district and every aspect of it might be helpful.
Nothing a couple hundred million dollars couldn't fix.
It's what?
Nothing a couple hundred million dollars couldn't fix.
Time and money. You can do anything with time and money.
Usually have one or the other. All right. Anybody have anything else?
Could everyone please sign this card before we leave?
I'm sorry, I was talking.
And I gave Sue the plaque for outstanding Board of Education. Congratulations, Board members, and to those that aren't here tonight that were part of that team, so congratulations.
All right. Kevin, can you put us into closed session, please?
Sign my card.
Nobody has any.
Did you sign it?
I started to.
Nobody wants to talk?
No.
Are we ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion to enter a closed session meeting for the purpose of reading the minutes of previous meetings and corrections and approval of same and other items under the Missouri Revised Statute 610.021 Subsections 1-21 and 610.022 Subsections 1-6, hiring, firing, disappointing, and promoting particular employees, 610.021 Subsection 3, in preparation of negotiations with employee groups, 610.021 Subsection 9.
All right. Roll call. Oh, can I have a second? Second.
Tori.
Say yes. Yes.
Yes.
Sam.
Yes.
Peggy.
Yes.
Lisa.
Yes.
Kevin, yes.
All right. We are in closed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Got all the way to my K.